So even if we removed those, it still doesn't limit it to escrows. Because the Board of Selectmen can still approve another way of guaranteeing it.
They could.
So, you know, I guess I'd be inclined to leave it alone, but...
And I try to not get too wrapped up in this. Pat reminds us often that, you know, we have liability. If our law anticipates or says we can take a bond or a letter of credit, and we routinely don't, I would think that somebody could say, hey, your bond says you, or your ordinance says you will.
But it doesn't. May be provided, doesn't, that's an important word in the law, may versus shall. So may implies some discretion.
With, on three options.
And then, yeah, and it also says it has to be approved as to which type, which form, and enforceability by the Board of Selectmen. So I don't really see how anyone could say that they're, you know, they're entitled to that. And you're withholding something, to me, that's very clearly discretionary as to... That they may be provided in a variety of ways, and which ways are subject to approval by the Select Board. And it may not even be one that's named.
Right. Yeah, that does anticipate another one.
Right, I mean, what that would be, I don't know.
No, I don't either.
But, well, you know, maybe, let's say somebody had a really valuable piece of property. Waterfront, and they said, I want to put my property up.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would be potentially acceptable, so...
We're talking right now, Pat, about...
Form of guarantee.
Yeah, the form of guarantees, we had considered eliminating bond and letter of credit. And we're just looking at the language. I think there's going to be some more board discussion about that. But Bernie's suggesting, and I'm on the fence, that maybe we leave it alone.
It's page 106.
Are we ever going to intend on using anything other than, was it cash escrow?
Well, what I was saying to John before you got here is, well, the first thing I've mentioned is, yes, clearly there's a preference, and right now a practice, of cash escrow only. However, so if we sought to eliminate the other options, there could be an unforeseen scenario in the future where the Board might say, oh, I wish we could have done something different. But if we tied their hands and they can't, then we might regret it, they, you know. The other thing is, then, as John and I were speaking further, the performance guarantee, as it reads now, it says they may be provided in a variety of means, including but not limited to, security bonds, letter of credit, or escrow account. So that language suggests they're not limited to those three things, even. So that's, my inclination is to just leave it alone. John, I think, I don't know if you were here when he was mentioning about, you know, litigation. If somebody said, you say you'll take these things and you don't. But it says they may be provided by a variety of means, and that it's subject to the form, meaning the type, and enforceability of the Select Board. So I think it's pretty clear that it's within their purview.
We did get asked that question, I remember. Someone made that statement.
Well, we, yeah, we were talking, we, the solar farm company came in and asked us to reconsider when we said we want cash, and we voted no, we're not going to reconsider. So I'm not, I'm, you know, obviously, we're not going to make a decision here. But I used to be hard over on, we should just get rid of them, we're not going to take them. But Bernie's right, we have to think long term and not tie our hands to a situation that, who knows, what could come up in the future.
So I'll put that on the list for Planning Board discussion.
Yep.
So, performance guarantees. So that's page 105.
You might also note on page 89 of 108, Bernie, they talk about performance guarantees associated with the conditional review permit. And the language is a little bit different, but...
Yep.
The conditions and the amount of the bond, check, or credit determined by us, by the Board. So it's a little bit different, but I think we should look at that.
Well, yeah, I was noticing too, on page 105 of 108. So we're talking about, I guess, yeah, performance guarantees on page 89, improvement guarantees on page 105. But the improvement guarantee says the Planning Board may require the posting of an improvement guarantee in such amount and form as specified in 6.6, which is the one we just went over. So how can we require it in the amount and form when the amount and form is decided by the Select Board? I mean, I guess we could recommend it, but ultimately, they decide. So, is this?
Yeah, so there's two issues.
Something that, I mean, I was present for the, you know, the case where someone came back and asked us to reconsider. Other than that, is this something the Board's had to deal with a lot? Or anyone's asked us to look at?
Twice, maybe?
Yeah, I think, certainly the solar farm didn't want to do cash or check. And I think a couple others have, maybe one or two others have asked. And we pretty firmly said no, and nobody's really followed up, except for the, yeah, the solar farm.
Yep. All right, so we, I put that down as something the Board needs to discuss. And before you got here, Pat, we had just gone over the list of what there is for us to work on, or what's in the works, which is solar, rental properties, mixed use, tiny houses. John brought up the issue of the definition of structures. But Chris talked to me today, earlier, and said that we're not in a position we can deal with that, because there was litigation that, I guess, has resolved, but that the period for appeals has not passed. So if we were to start working on it, and it was appealed, that could be problematic. So I don't know whether someone, you know, told him that, but that's what he said, that we weren't to do it. So I guess, you know, as Chair, it would be up to him what's on the agenda and what isn't. So that's not on, at least for now. So is there stuff on solar for us to do, or is that with North Star, we're now doing revisions?
I think it's with them for revisions.
That's what I think.
And they... I don't know, as I've seen the revisions on mixed use either. I think Jason said when he was last here that they came in, the mixed use revisions came in, but I don't remember getting that.
And Jason is out.
Right. The, so the short answer is, I don't know on those. I think rentals, we've given some input to get it formatted, and, you know, we haven't, we haven't seen that.
Okay.
One issue that I just want to raise, and again, this is probably for the bigger Board, but I think tiny houses, we got pretty close, or we're pretty happy where we are with tiny houses. There was a article in York County Coast Star this past week. And I won't remember the town. Maybe Lebanon? It was a nearby town that, I guess, has just updated to allow tiny homes. But the article made me think, and by the way, it said, you know, like we know, the state said you've got to update your ordinances. It also levied no timeframe requirement. So whatever this town was, was early on in the process. And part of the concerns they were talking about is, they didn't want a proliferation like a tiny home complex, right? And so in my head, we're okay, and that's why I'm just saying this, probably need the whole Board. We said they're okay, just like a, if you're going to build a normal home, right? So you'd have to have septic and water and all that.
And two acres.
And two acres.
For the most part.
Right. This, this town, either the guy, they had a picture and a guy, and he had a composting toilet, and I don't think he dug a well. But anyway, the concern from a town perspective was, they didn't want to, all of a sudden, by saying, okay, tiny homes are okay, you get this influx of a tiny home community. And when I read it, I thought, well, we're okay, because we said treat it just like a home. So you'd need two acres, you need a well, you need a state-approved septic. Or if it's an accessory, okay, but you have to tie into the main buildings, main homes, septic and water.
Provided you can.
Provided you can.
Yeah.
And if they couldn't, then they'd...
Do their own.
They'd have to do their own. I just, I just think we want to make sure of that, that we're not opening the door to some sort of trailer park of tiny homes.
Well, it could happen, in my view, not a, not a park in terms of lot sizes like a trailer park. But if somebody bought a big parcel of land, and they wanted to divide it into, if it's two acres, it's required for a home, and they want to divide it into, say, 22-acre lots and put all tiny homes on them, I believe they could.
Well, yeah, then the subdivision rules apply, and they'd have to comply with that in terms of access and frontage and roads. And I still believe that it'd be a two-acre plot, and they'd have to have a well and a septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'll continue to look. I think basically, the way the main law reads is, if it's, if it's the same, that it's subject to the same criteria that a single-family dwelling would have, and that, other than that, the town can't prohibit it.
Yeah.
Restrict it, so...
Right, it's got to comply with the rest of our ordinance. And that's why, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, so other people, you know, will, will think about it, that we haven't, we haven't, and I don't think we have, because in my view, it's just, it's the same thing as a regular house, or another accessory building, it has to comply with those rules. And then if somebody buys a big plot acreage, then they have to comply with the subdivision rules.
I think the key is that, the difference is that they're allowing the porta toilets and the composting toilets. And I think maybe that would fall under campground more than ability to keep it a tiny house.
People can buy, this isn't the statute, but people can buy a tiny home, put a tiny home any place that a single-family dwelling is allowed. This is the land use planner for Lewiston. Any lot that you're allowed to put a family home, you can put a tiny home on. You have to meet the standards of single-family homes and the requirement under main law.
And that's septic and a well.
So if those are required for a single-family home, then, yeah. Most people that want a tiny home are doing it for economical reasons. So I can't imagine really, like I was saying, as a possibility, buying this huge parcel and dividing it into two-acre lots for people to put tiny homes on. I think it would be cost prohibitive for...
Yeah, if they have to comply with all that other stuff.
Spend more on their lot than they would their home, but... All right. Tiny homes, tiny homes. Okay, so I just opened my folder, and I have some things here with a sticky from Ashley, and it says, "From the 11322 meeting." And I'm assuming that everybody must have gotten them at one point. But the reason I'm mentioning it is, there is a document in here related to mixed use.
Which I think we asked to be updated, but maybe that is the updated ones.
Okay, yeah, contractors yard, which we've decided not to do. Solar, so... Yeah, I think this has been updated, because it has it as being, oh, no. As it is being permitted.
Yeah.
And we decided that it would be permitted only in the three commercials, right? So this is not up to date, because I know that's what we talked about.
Yeah.
We were going to, again, focus on fixing the problem, which was mixed use and commercial, without expanding it into others. So I think, what I don't know is, you know, Ashley took those notes, and whether they've made it to North Star yet or not, I don't know. Mixed use, status with North Star. Okay, so I don't think there's anything we can do on that today, because we don't know where that's at. I am going to make a note.
Yeah, because we also said in the definition, take out that compact urban recreational facility, and, you know, put something more normal for, for us. And that wasn't changed.
Yeah. I made a note that I will ask at the meeting, if, like, let's say, for the sake of discussion, they have received that back from North Star. If it had been emailed to us, we could work on it whether they're here or not.
Right.
So that would be helpful in the future.
So you're restricting mixed use to just the commercial zones?
That's what we talked about, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we were.
We should have rooted on that.
Were we going to look at the 2,500 square foot? In the other zones, or no? Less than 2,500 square feet of gross floor area. Is that under other uses? Which chart was that?
Well, we had to figure out where to put it, and I've got, I think we decided in 2.7.3.
Okay.
I don't really, that's what my notes say.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that I remember us pointing out to Ashley exactly in the chart where it was going, and all of that.
Right, it was going to be O, right, so we didn't have to move anything else.
Right, we didn't have to move other things around.
Right.
And it was just those three.
It was on the agenda for last meeting.
And I didn't realize that we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we'll have the opportunity to bring things up. Chris mentioned the weather may come into play. I don't know what's expected or when, but he was saying he, if it's going to be canceled, he would hope to know by meantime.
You know, I have, oh, that's good, if they let us know early. But for mixed use, on my notes, I wrote building next to mixed use. So it's mixed-use building. I don't know if I...
Yeah, we were talking about the critical rural areas, five-acre zoning, and nothing is allowed.
Mixed, we were, I think where that note may have come from, John, was saying that somebody could do mixed use in the same building versus just mixed use on the same lot. Because if you remember, I mentioned, like, somebody has a convenience store, and they wouldn't have apartments, same building, so that might have generated your note.
And then my notes, we had no's. But then ours, for the A, commercial A and C and mixed use and ends. And I'm not sure why we did that, instead of Cs.
Maybe we thought that it didn't need, like, conditional use, but...
Yeah, maybe not, but...
CEO review.
It was review, yeah. I think it was Gavin.
Oh, that's what my notes were. Everything else was...
So, can't, we could have mixed, so I think we're down to just rentals today that we can work on. We had, solar is with North Star, mixed use is with North Star, tiny houses, we're waiting. So rentals is the only one left, and I, you know, the note, John, on bonds and letters of credit. I don't think... So, do you have copies of this most recent, this is the most recent rental document?
Yeah, I think I do.
Thank you.
We need this in the right format, too, but yeah.
Yeah, this definitely was drafted after our meeting.
Yeah, that, because that first paragraph addresses the, when they hold it up for rental.
Yeah, and the last, on the other page, the last item left to space, that we need input from Chief Smith and a master plumber, that came from that discussion.
Yeah, that's right.
One thing I wonder about in the first sentence is, owners of residential rental units enact in name. I wonder if it should say must register and receive a permit for. Because registering's different than actually having a permit. And we are saying they have to display a copy of the permit that's visible to the tenants. It also would make it easier enforcement-wise, like if there's a 911 call, or a neighbor calls, or whatever, and law enforcement's at the house. You know, someone can say, oh, it's registered, you know, I've, I registered it, or I gave it to Jason, or... Which is different than, sir, or ma'am, may I see your permit?
Right, the fire chief spin through.
Yeah.
So that'd be an additional sentence after registering?
Yeah, I'd say owners of residential rental units enact and must register and obtain a permit for said units with the town's code enforcement officer by.
Were we trying to keep the CEO out of the permitting, no?
Well, that's where they're supposed to register them. We, the inspections, we were trying to keep him out of.
Which would be part of the permitting.
Yeah, I suppose, they're going to have to develop that process. But let's say, for the sake of discussion, I register, I go in, I meet with Jason, I register my property that I want to do rentals. Before he issues the permit, he's got to hear from Chief Smith that the chief went over, looked at it, it's good to go. He wouldn't just issue the permit because I came in to register.
Yeah, there's a process.
They're going to have to, yeah. And I don't know, because I don't have the experience, how detailed we have to get. Like, is that something administratively, they can just develop the application form, and procedurally, how they're going to do it? I would hope so.
Using the word registers, really, that's how it happens now, I think, because you have to go in, you fill out an application, so you're registering it. You don't obtain a permit right then and there.
Right.
It all has to be gone through and approved. And it takes, you know, a month or so. So, you know, that's what they're doing now. At least, that's what I went through.
Who's doing that now?
Down in the code enforcement office. You put in an application, you pay the fee, but you don't, you don't have a permit, it's not approved until it gets approved.
A permit for what, though? What type of property?
For building, just the same thing, it has to go through the same inspection.
As, okay. So the requirement is that you register it, and you do? So the, the requirement is that you register it and, and you do get a permit for the type of building you're talking about?
Right. But it, but my point is that it is a two-part process, I think now. I don't think I'm mistaken. That's what I went through.
Okay, yep.
Not for a rental, but for a building that you have to look at, you know, um, fire extinguishers, et cetera.
We don't get involved to, to your question, we don't get involved in that. The specifics of the permitting process.
Yeah.
Certainly not for a building.
Yeah. But see, like in Portland, I owned a rental property and you're required to register it with the city and they do come and inspect it and all that, but you're not given a permit. You don't have to display anything in your house that says you've registered it, it's been inspected, it's approved. Which I think is something we do want.
To protect the town, I think.
Yeah. It's, okay.
Good idea, Bernie.
All right, so keep going. Let's register. I'll just be quiet, let you read.
I think the definition covers it, yeah.
So is there anything we need to do with the land use chart?
Yes, it's gotta go in, that's one of the things that was hoping we would get some. We've talked about it a couple of times. We have, you know, we have the original one from a couple of years ago where it was listed as short-term rental units and we needed to change that to rental units. And then in the back, um, you know, we had identified where in the rental, in the definitions and then in five, for this it was 5.11, but I think we determined 529 would be the performance standards which are, I guess what we would call these additional requirements.
Okay, so do we need to put anything in the land use chart? Which I guess would be page 14 of 108, residential structures and uses. Which just tells you whether those are allowed in certain zones, right? This isn't, I don't see where this is a zoning issue. This is, if I understand it right, any place where you're allowed to have a dwelling, dwelling unit accessory, dwelling unit residential or multifamily. You would be allowed to do rentals. It's not a separate land use.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that. It is a different land use if you're running your building or a part of your building out. Previously, in the, in the one we did that didn't make it, we had it in 7.2, um, at it looks like we had inserted it at G and pushed everything else down.
Okay, so were, was the intent?
And then across the board, um, it was ours. So the CEO will get the permit and you're good to go across the board if you wanna rent something out.
As a short-term rental?
Yeah, but that was, yes, and we think it should be all rentals.
Okay, so right now, ours, ours, um, it looks like those are ours already except for multifamily dwelling, which requires a site plan review. And still would.
Yeah.
Now, what this does-
That's different than, uh, a rental. I mean, if somebody's gonna build a multifamily dwelling, they might anticipate renting some out, but the approval, approval for that, it's gotta be a site plan review.
Right, yeah, I'm not dispute, I'm not saying that shouldn't be the way it is. But I guess what I'm trying to tease out here is, we define what a residential rental unit is. Let's start with number one, it includes dwelling. So if you look on page 14 of 108, right now, a dwelling anywhere it's allowed is already an R. So nothing changes.
Well, it does, Bernie, because you're anti, you're not, renting that dwelling is different. That's a single-family home somebody's building is typically what we're thinking about. Now what we're thinking about is that single-family home that's been built is now gonna be rented to 20 knuckleheads from Boston on the weekend. And that should be a permitted thing and it should be called out. Did I say knuckleheads from Boston?
Okay, um, yeah.
I, I have that we put for multifamily dwelling, we changed the commercial A to S and the commercial C to S.
Yes, yeah, I have that note too.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do see what you mean now, John. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I think we wanna be overt about it, about you're using your home. You've got it approved and built and all this according to the existing.
Right, yep, no, I agree with you. So now residential rental units would be a separate category.
Yeah.
And we don't need to distinguish what type of structure it is because we do that by definition. So anything you wanna rent is a residential rental unit and would be subject to what? CEO review?
Yeah, ours is what we had, what we had said.
Yep, except for multifamilies. Or was that, no, where, where we put those S's? What's that?
We put the multifamily D.
Right.
Under commercial A and commercial C, we changed them both to S.
S.
Right, and that, that I think was because of the mixed use
Yeah, probably.
discussion.
Okay.
I think instead of moving, what I would suggest is instead of moving like we did before, we tried to stick this in either above or below home occupations, we just make it a K, make it a K at the end of the list. We don't have to make any strikeouts, just add rental, however we, whatever we call it.
So you're referring to what's on this page, if you flip this over?
Yeah, that I think becomes the performance requirements, which we put it-
No, no, it says, um, need to update the land use chart, item G to read residential rental units. So you wanna make that K?
Yes, I don't wanna, I don't wanna strike out.
Okay.
You know.
That's easy because I can write it right here. I like that.
Yeah, that, that was part of the problem with our editors in the town, that we didn't get it right with the strikeout. Highlights and all. And then we put the two definitions in and then we put, uh, the performance requirements, which are the, on the back in five, I think we initially said-
529, you said.
Yeah, we did, but then they wrote up solar is 529, so we, so they don't have to change all that. We could just make it 530, I think, rentals.
Okay, so what, um, going across on the chart, the only, what would the letters be?
I think they'd all be R.
They'd all be R.
Yeah.
Yep.
Across the board.
Yep. Okay, so I will write that down as a recommendation for the board to consider, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and additional requirements would be performance standards.
Yeah, I think, I think that becomes 5.30 at the end of the, uh, requirement section.
Where's, can you tell me where that is?
Uh, yeah, hang on, it's around, in the index, you can see just follow to the end of the index, it stops at 28. Uh, yeah, on page 80 of 108, then we were gonna start with either rentals or we gotta add solar farms and rentals, so one becomes 29, one becomes 30. Since our support contractor hit pick 29 for solar, I don't think we spend money to make him change that to 530. I think we just make rentals 530. Would be my recommendation.
You're starting to sound like me, mentioning the cost involved.
Well, you know, I, I had a lot of support contractors during my career and that's always an issue.
What, tell me again, what page you're on?
Um, well, the section of requirements ends on page 80 of 108.
Okay.
And so you would start then with a 5.29 and that would be all about solar.
Right.
And then after that, we'd have a 5.30 and that would be,
Okay.
these rentals, the residential rental units.
Yep. Okay.
And, uh, as I said, the, uh, table of contents on page I. Oh, that's interesting, some pages over, about that. I, 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 um, you know, we'd have to add solar and rentals. We have to have the Os in the definitions. I think that's it pending what we get from, uh, from, uh, the chief and the plumbers.
Yep, what did you say, we need to add, you said solar and residential to something in definitions?
Yeah, so where we have the residential resi, resident, that definition needs to go into definitions.
Correct.
You know, you find the right alphabetical spot.
Yeah.
And then I think we decided we needed to define owner because owner wasn't defined.
Okay, yep, um, so owner is, oh, I see, so you were saying we need to add owner and residential units to definitions?
Yes.
Okay. I knew there, I thought you had said something with O and I couldn't, didn't catch. Okay, got it. So we, yeah, and we approved that language, I think, last, well, we drafted it. We've still gotta put this whole thing before the board.
Yeah, and I, I think, um, that would be a good one to get the take of, once we get this in that sort of format, it'd be a good one to get the take of the support guy.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe even, I trust you and it looks fine to me, but does the lawyer need to look at that language?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, that was something I said to Chris recently that I've come to wonder whether we as a board are taking too much on in that respect. Whether some things should be going out to attorneys and professionals, developing the language. Like, should we really, I don't mean to sound like put out by it, but should we really have to do that? Are we really qualified to be? I think we've done a really good job, but I don't think that someone sitting on the planning board should feel that they have to have that skill set to do it. I think it's more like, what's the objective we wanna do, we wanna accomplish? Put it out to the professionals, we'd like you to develop that and then we look at it.
Yeah, and even, even a draft like that to give them, that, you know, I think that's a starting point. I also think it gives us a little bit more support that it wasn't us, five people who came up solely with this language. It was vetted with professionals.
Yeah.
Which I think would help when we're defending it at the, at the town hall. Cause you know, somebody will take a shot at it. They'll be,
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's something there that he's not gonna like.
Reading information, who did it?
Yeah. Okay. So we may get done really early today. So we have a meeting tomorrow, yep. And maybe from there, I will not be here next week. And I think or the week after, I'm leaving on the ninth for 10 days. So, which doesn't obviously mean that we can't, you know, not meet, but I don't know now whether there is enough to justify wanting a workshop, but there might be if stuff comes back from North.
If stuff comes back, I think we're in pretty good shape. I, if we could get this rental one into that format and then we need solar and mixed use to come back.
Yep, you know, maybe, I don't know, I know Jason is out this week, I don't know if Ashley is too. Because I could send an email and I, I will, if you want, I'll send an email to Ashley and copy Jennifer on it, saying what we've done, could you, can you update the chart? You know, give us a draft chart for our next meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know if Ashley's out, whether Jennifer has time for that, but, um, maybe.
I don't know if she is.
We'll try to move it forward if we can. Yeah.
But I think we're in a pretty good spot with, with, uh, one, two, three, the four of them, we're doing, we're a lot further along.
Yeah, well, and I was looking too early, I made a list of everything, you know, and we started out solar, rentals, mixed use, tiny houses, bonds, letters of credit, docs, marijuana, contractors yard, storage buildings. So I don't think the measure of what all we did is what gets put forward. It's, you know, we had substantive discussions about a lot of things
I agree.
that got us to here.
I agree.
Yeah, so I think that's good and-
I, I think the peers is a good one. I mean, I, I was pretty hard over it and couldn't believe that one didn't pass because, you know, what is a permanent doc? That whole discussion. But then when you focused this on all the good stuff that exists that would go away with what we proposed to do, I thought that was good, let's just leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Nobody's inundating the code office with, you know, he's got a permanent doc that's spanning the, the river.
Yeah, well, I also think that, for me, with some of this stuff, it's been a really useful question to ask. How did this, where did this originate from? How did this start? Because if we just pick up the ball where a previous board was working on something and feel like we have to carry that to the end or finish it, we don't really know that.
Yeah.
We don't know what, if the problem still exists or how pervasive it was. And unless it's something really a matter of, you know, public safety or a major nuisance or something, it'll come back next year or in two years.
This is strictly my opinion, um, but when I first got on the board and we had the, the list of them to go forward that the then, um, code enforcement brought to us and said we need to put our stamp of approval and, and, um, send them forward. and, um, send them forward, one of them was to move the good neighbor policy out of the requirements and make it like a suggested thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I kept asking the why question, why would you wanna do that?
Right.
And it wasn't said overtly, but it was a workload management issue for that CEO, I'm convinced of it. I'm convinced of it. He just didn't wanna have to deal with somebody saying, I got all this noise next to me.
Right.
And so we talked about that and chose not to send that one forward because of that.
Yep.
The others, you know, I think a lot of that was, I bet the peer thing was a workload management issue for him. Again, it's my-
That one was.
Yeah, my personal opinion, but I also don't think there was a burning, you know, burning reason to do it. A burning good reason to do it. So, that is, that's always a good question to ask. If in our experience, it's like this whole, um, pits, in our experience, now that's become a big issue in the town.
Yep.
And, and we should try and address it.
We done, anything else?
I can't think of anything.
Alright, so it is, what time is it, Virginia? Just after four?
Yeah, it's after four.
Four oh-
Four oh-three.
Four oh-three, thank you, and the planning board workshop today has ended. Our next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at six, weather permitting. Thanks.